To order at four six, first we're gonna have our invocation by Commissioner McPherson, then our pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to come before you. Father, we ask that you just watch over us as we do the business of your city. Father, we ask that you just give us wisdom from on high, divine wisdom, Father, that whatever decisions and whatever things that are done here today, that it be done all to your honor and to your glory. Father, and that you will be pleased with whatever is done. Father, we just ask that you just continue to watch over our city, Father, that you keep a hedge of protection in mind, Father. And, Father, we commit this city unto your hands, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
We're gonna have roll call, do we have to do roll call in the workshop?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney. Okay, City Clerk is present.
Okay, we're here for this workshop for one topic, the tentative budget FY twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, and at this time, we'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Commission. As indicated, this is the third workshop of a series of workshop meetings regarding the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Along with City Clerk and Finance Director, Mr. Martin is present to conduct and go through this workshop as requested. With that, I'm not completely sure of all of the information that you have today, nothing has changed, I will start by saying that. So, it's a continuation of what was in place from our last workshop a couple of days ago. And we can continue to go through, I think there was a series of questions that were being asked by Vice Mayor at the time that we adjourned at the last meeting. So, if there's a desire to continue that, we're prepared to do that, and if there's any other questions or comments concerning. I think it's key that, from a staffing standpoint, we're very, we're on a very strict timeline in terms of completing the requested changes, starting from our first workshop up until today. After today, we have a real short period to get everything corrected, adjusted, amended, to get back to you prior to the first scheduled hearing that's gonna be scheduled, that's already scheduled for September eighth. So, we're hoping that this is the final workshop. Again, it'll provide enough time for us to complete what we need to get back to you in a relatively quick turnaround. So, with that, we'll follow the recommended chart, recommended flow for today's meeting. And one other thing before, before we get started, I just, I know this is, this is probably already widely known, but primarily for Commissioner Scott and Commissioner McDonald's information. The budget that we're working on and the budget that's being proposed for next fiscal year is essentially the same budget that we are operating on now and have been for the last almost nine months. There, the only major change, as a matter of fact, is fourteen percent less than what the total amounts were for the budget that we're currently working on for fiscal year twenty-five. The only substantial change comes in the line of the Capital One and the Capital Projects, the Barfield Highway Project no longer being associated with, will be no longer associated with next year's budget. But again, without being repetitious, the budget that we're working on and being proposed for next year is essentially the same budget that we've worked on it now for the last nine months.
If we could, City Manager, just continue where you left off at the last meeting, and if Vice Mayor has any questions contained in this area, we can.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I think we had essentially finished the workshop, the slide presentation, and we were in the process of answering a series of questions. And I don't know exactly where we left off with the Vice Mayor's line of question. Vice Mayor, do you, do you recall exactly?
We had started looking at the different departments. When you finished, I had some questions I was asking you on the slide, but then the next section we were moving to were the departments that we were looking, that we were looking at. If we had any questions in regards to the different departments.
So, are there any general questions from the Commission?
Which department we?
We had not gotten to any specific department, that's just where we dropped, stopped off and started to look at the different departments.
Okay. Okay, does it, does it make sense to start your proposed budget packet and just follow that in sequence? Starting with page. We need to make some, some adjustments on the title pages in the elected official sense, there's been some changes. But the first, on page four, we could probably just have a starting point. It's the summary of the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And these are the proposed budget expenditures and expenses of the city. Again, out of fourteen point eight percent reduction from last year's operating expenditures and expenses. And it shows the rollback rate, and it starts with estimated revenues at a mileage rate per one thousand six point five four one nine. And it goes through each estimated revenue, each expenditure, expenses. Are there, are there any questions from that? And again, the slide presentation pretty much is a summary of what we're gonna be going through detailedly here now. So, it's the same information, same amounts, it's just shown in a different format. Really any questions on, on that page, in particular, page four? So, we'll move to the next page. And again, this is a projection of the general fund as budgeted last year, proposed for this year, the variance and the percentage of differences. We've had, this was pulled and used in one of the earlier slides, on the slideshow presentation, the same information again. It goes across the different departments showing what's budgeted, what's proposed, and the percent of difference what's being proposed.
That's page five, we're on, right?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question up to the top, that's expenditures by department, it says, that's the comparison by fund, right? Page five, it's titled comparison by fund.
Yes.
Is it, I have a question for the Commission. And I see we're budgeted for one hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-seven, does that includes donations if we want to? If we have some, you know, some donations if we want to, to utilize that one hundred eighty-eight thousand, or does that just include our conferences?
Let me, let me, let me refer you to a page that give a little bit more detail than that breakdown.
Page fourteen.
Fourteen. That's a snapshot at the Commission's budget. It gives the categories. And it's by department. It includes the salary and wages, benefits, total personnel services, and it also includes, starting with three-ten through five-sixty-one, fees, travel, charges. Amounts allocated for different major meetings. You see contributions and sponsorships there, I think that was what you were alluding to. So, the total amount, the one eighty-eight seven six seven, is inclusive of all of the line items that's highlighted here.
So, we went down from the eleven thousand to ten thousand, that was the only difference, I guess, I'm seeing.
There are a few other minor differences, but based on what was, was, was allocated and spent year-to-date when this was printed. We feel as if that, the ten thousand is a, is a good projection for next fiscal year. You see an increase in, in the dues for a thousand dollars, so. And that's really the only substantial difference, and I think it was alluded to earlier in the, I think it was the first budget hearing, I mean, budget workshop. The difference in your total overall is a six thousand dollar difference, that's the biggest major difference, and that's coming in the line of life and health insurance. And that's calculated on the number of people that's participating in, in the insurance plan. Everything else is relatively the same. If you go back, does that answer your questions, Vice Mayor?
Mm-hmm, I see it.
Okay, if you want to go back to page five, there any other questions on page five? And we're able to do that, the way that the, the information is provided to you, we're able to pull each department and do the individual review like we just did with the Commission. So, if there's any questions about the manager's budget or community development budget by department, we can flip to those pages and get that amount of detail as well. So, the next page gives a breakdown of the number of FTEs that we have and what's being proposed for next year. And then we get into.
That's number seven, we on there, right?
Yeah, we're going to number seven now.
Okay.
This gives, this is personnel cost by department, again, this only personnel cost by department. It outlines the salaries, the retirement, FICA, insurance, et cetera, and gives totals across each department.
I have a question on this one, I have something written down. That, you gave us a sheet with a list of all the positions on there, it had forty-five on there. I have a question, it says for Parks Department, we have, where is it at? I wasn't sure, I was trying to add them, I was trying to add them up, because when I added the numbers up, they were different from that page six, from that page six that you gave us. With the, with the, I was trying to count them up.
It's.
Like for Finance, I guess you say it's four people for Finance, HR was one. I guess, I was trying to find out, you have eleven point five positions for, I guess I was trying to count them up based on the, the titles of them. Of the, eleven point five for Rosen Street Community Development, one, Recreation Department, seven, and then you had Recreation Department, again, two. But I guess I was trying to match them up with the list of number six that you gave us, and I couldn't match them up. Some of these positions, I wasn't sure, where do they fall up under?
They're all by department, there's Parks and Recreation specifically, it's funded by the city. And also, there's a component of a department funded by the county.
Right.
So, the city FTEs are captured in the city's portion of the budget, and the county's FTEs that they're responsible for are captured in, in the county's part of the budget. We've, we've calculated them all, maybe ten plus times, and we have forty-five. The point, the point one of the point, those are considered, point five, they are considered part-time positions. So, we have some part-time positions that calculate to the amounts that you've reflected in your comments a minute ago.
So, we still have a Operation Manager?
No.
I'm, just why I'm asking, trying to match up the sheets, 'cause on the number six, we still have that Operation Manager on here.
Yes.
And we have the Park Ranger on here, and I guess I would ask, what department will the Park Ranger fall up under?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. The difference is, if you round the forty-one, 'cause you have half within the marina, and half, you will have basically forty-two. So, the, the park managers and the project, the project managers are excluded, they're not budgeted, they're not in that budget.
You speaking to the mic?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the project manager is not budgeted. In that ticket.
So, where are they budgeted at?
They're, they're not, the positions are there, but there's no budget.
Yeah.
For those positions at this time.
So, we're taking them off this sheet?
No, we're not gonna take them off the sheet. The idea is that at one point, we need the positions filled, but they're, they're not budgeted at this current time.
So, so how are we gonna fill them if we don't put them in the budget?
Okay, so they're not in the budget now, if we receive grant funds, as an example, we can then include them in the budget. If there's a, the desire or need to fill it throughout the budget year, we have contingencies in place to make those dollars available as well. But from an administrative and staffing standpoint, they're, they're not counted in what the numbers that you see in front of you now.
So, that's the same thing for the Park Ranger as well?
Yes.
So, they're not, the Park Ranger's not going to be budgeted either, it's based on the same thing if we get a grant?
Not solely if we get a grant, I just use it as an example, that's a way it could be funded. But again, there are contingency funds built into the, into the budget that would allow for changes throughout the year.
So, if we're working on the budget now, and we know we need a Park Ranger, and that's something we've been asking for, I'm just trying, we can't, why can't we just go ahead and put it in the budget?
That's, that's a decision by the Commission. But that, as it stands now, there's, there's no allocated funding in line for it right now.
And so, there are some funds here, 'cause we're working on the budget, that maybe can be moved to, 'cause that's why we're working on the budget, that cannot be used for some of this other stuff. And I know we do need a Park Ranger, so if we can look at where we can move some funds from to fund the position of a Park Ranger, 'cause this is a position that we've been talking about that we need, is the Park Ranger.
What, what we do have, Vice Mayor, we have a part-time person as a marine, Marina maintenance helper, part-time now. And it's built, it's built into the budget to hire that position in a full-time position, starting October one, under the recreational apartment. In order to, and we've taken a look at Park Ranger per se, in order to fund a certified Park Ranger, you're looking at in excess of eighty, ninety thousand dollars, based on what that position calls for in terms of the salary. We're fortunate enough to be able to get a lot of that in the position that we have currently as a part-time, and will eventually roll over until full-time for next year. So, as a cost savings, I think it's best, in the city's best interest to utilize that full-time Marina helper position versus classifying a Park Ranger's position, which was probably be at least two or two and a half times the salary of, of the, of the maintenance, of the Marina maintenance person right now.
So, maybe we can call it something else, maybe we can't, don't have to call it, because I'm just, if they're maintenance, how are they, I'm talking about somebody for the other two parks, 'cause we talk about the bathrooms not being open, and we need the bathroom open during the park hours. So, if they are Marina maintenance, are, they're part-time, so my question still is, which has been a concern with the bathrooms being open, that person is only working part-time. So, what about doing park hours when park hours are open? So, maybe we can't, don't have to call it a Park Ranger, maybe we can call it something else, give it another name. But I, I still think we need that position full-time versus all the part-time positions that we're getting. We need to take care of, making sure that things are taken care of in the city, 'cause the bathrooms are not being open, and we're saying that people are terrorizing the bathrooms when we leave them open. So, I just think that we need someone full-time to be, they can work on a Marina as well, but need to be full-time and have availability so that the bathrooms and, you know, making sure that things are not going on at the parks in the evening as well. I just think it, you know, we need someone full-time, and not just for part-time maintenance at the Marina. I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are on it.
Well, as I indicated, that part-time position in October one will become a full-time position, starting October one. The challenges with the bathrooms are, are numerous, as, as you and the Commission knows. But what we try to do is, we don't leave those bathrooms open after operational hours, for obvious reasons, they're, they're, they're being destroyed, for lack of a better term. And the ones that are open beyond that period of time are associated with the campers. And we pretty much have those under control and under, on a schedule that will allow for the cleanliness and, and the overall operation of those bathrooms. And unless and until the city gets in a position to hire or have a twenty-four-hour person to, to kind of control and patrol the parks. I guess, as a Park Ranger, or a combination of Park Rangers, you're gonna continue to have those challenges with hours over and above the, the regular workday.
So, the part-time person that you say you have up there now, you say they're going full-time October one?
Yes, in the fiscal year.
And what, and so where are they falling in, up under? They are already calculated in these seven people for the two sixty-five?
Yes.
But they're just not, it's just not on this list that we have? So, this is not an accurate list that we have of the list of workers that we have? That's, is this list accurate? Is that position on here? 'Cause we have Park Ranger on this paper.
Yeah.
Program Specialist One slash Park Ranger, so would that person be doing, is that would be the same person?
No, this, this sheet would need to be adjusted to reflect the, the most current. And when you get your, after today's meeting, as I indicated earlier, there, there needs to be some adjustments to be made. And that's one of the areas we need to readjust the actual Personnel Service detail to reflect what would be captured in the budget overall. There are some changes that, that needs to be made. Outside of the fact that we just mentioned a minute ago, there are positions here that, that reside in the city's list of, of jobs, but they're just not currently filled at this time. But if it, if it makes more sense, and if it's a lot easier for you to understand and read, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll collapse this list, only include those that are current by position and numbers.
I have a question, that person, what do they do this, what, what's going to be they do this, what do they do?
I don't have the job description in front of me, but basically, that person is responsible for anything that's associated with the Marina at this point. Make sure that, a lot of things, we talked about with the pool, you check the pool, the bathrooms, they're in contact with boats that's coming in and out. There's a move a foot to get the fuel tank recertified, and eventually correct some of the things that would allow boats to be able to get fuel once they come in.
So, they're just for the Marina, it's not for the parks? He's not gonna have anything to do with the park, he's just gonna maintain? He's not going to have anything to do with the park, he's just going to maintain the marina?
It'd be mostly maintaining the marina, working there, I guess so.
But we have another person that's worked on the marina too? Some, I seen, they were telling me about someone work up there?
Yeah, it's a person that, that shares, shared through the Public Works Department, that's mainly responsible for maintaining the lawn and doing some work in the bathrooms as well.
So when the, when the visitors come, where do they, where do they go at to pay for the rental?
They're in the conference room area, where the office is.
But someone working there?
Yes.
So that's the third person?
It'll be three total, correct?
Will the clerk be, because on here, I guess this needs to be updated, because under the marina, we only have a part-time person. So the part-time person, is that the person that collects the payments?
The part-time, it's a full-time position, but her position is shared between departments. She's part-time in one department, her salary is half in one department, and the other part of her salary is half. Half in Public Works and half in, what's the other?
Recreation.
Marina, yeah.
So half in Public Works and half in Marina, but they're full-time?
Yes. It's just the way that they're paid through the budget.
So I'm still back to the person for the parks, that I think the position need to be, some kind of way, we need to find a way to put the position in the budget. I'm still back to that, I don't know what the consistence of the commission is, but that person is for the marina, and I'm still back to the parks.
So your recommendation is just to have a position for someone to clean the bathrooms?
No, not to just clean the bathrooms, but to make sure that our parks are safe, make sure things are not taking place at the parks when they should, making sure people are not in the parks after hours when the park is closed.
No, we don't have any jurisdiction on anything after the, after the park is closed. That's, that becomes a different matter altogether. I will say, the existing staff that we have in Parks and Recreation, they're responsible for a lot of the things that you just announced, but anything after hours, we're, there's no responsibility for the city.
Question, so at the, at each park, what time do the restrooms open up? Do y'all open them up at seven o'clock in the morning and close them at dawn, when the park is closed, does someone should be there to close the restroom?
Yes, ideally, yes.
Yeah. Another thing, we don't have any water fountains at neither park. Like, if the kids out there playing, where do they get water? And then the bathroom's always locked. So I'm just saying, when are we going to start opening them up in the morning? And like you said, someone just go check, maintain them, and that, you know, and at dawn, lock them up, and it's, that's up to the officers, whether they, they leave them out there at dawn or not.
Yeah, that, that becomes an operational issue that I can, I can follow up with, but ideally, that's the way that it's supposed to work. Park opens, bathroom opens, park closed, bathroom closed. Now, we need to make some adjustments on some of the water fountains. There have been challenges with destroying water fountains and things of that nature.
That's because they put the wrong ones in.
Yeah, and I've talked to that department about finding something that's a little bit more sturdier. So we'll, we'll work on that part.
So that, so you're saying, we're not going to worry about the person for the park, you're going to designate, or they're going to come from which department is going to be taking care of that then?
They're already in Parks and Recreation.
So that's going to be Parks, okay?
Yes.
Okay. One more question, custodian. I see we have a part-time custodian for the entire city. I know you said the sheet is not correct. So can you explain to us why we're just a part-time custodian for the entire city?
Well, it boils down to funding. Up until a couple of months ago, we had huge support from the Senior Employment Program through AARP. As you very well know, Department of Labor funds have been minimized, which has impacted that program. We're hopeful that we still have signs that those dollars will come back, but from a funding standpoint, that's the amount that we have to allocate. We know for certain that staff, existing staff, has picked up a tremendous amount of that burden. Just this morning, if you were coming to City Hall, you saw most employees making sure that the place was clean and sanitized. So we pick up where we can and make sure that we can do as best we can until funding is sufficient enough to hire for a lot of the things that we just don't have the funding for now.
So let me ask a question then, because the sixteen thousand, well, the money that was cut from the commission, where, where were those funds allocated to? I guess that's my question. So maybe we can find out where some of these funds was allocated to, to generate a full-time position. So
What do you say?
There's a decrease, not a cut then, so let me go back to the commission budget. Where we, okay, for the commission budget, last year, we budgeted sixty thousand for travel. This year is fifty thousand, so that's ten, that's a ten thousand dollar difference. That's a ten thousand dollar difference. Okay, so that's ten thousand, okay, where we had, where else was it cut at? I'm just trying to see where, I don't know what other charges. We budgeted, we went, there's a, okay, so we went from eleven thousand dollars for contributions down to ten thousand, so that's a thousand, so that's eleven thousand dollars. But I know you added a few dollars in, I know you added an additional thousand dollars to do, so that, X out that thousand dollars. So I'm just trying to find out, those ten thousand dollars that was, we, like the health insurance, we budgeted, we had twenty-six thousand, now it's budgeted for twenty thousand, so that's six thousand dollars. So I'm just asking, where, where were those other funds rerouted to?
None was rerouted, Vice Mayor, and just to start it with the object number two, two thirty, where we referenced a minute ago, the reason and rationale behind the difference with life and health insurance, that's contingent upon how many members of the commission actually participate in the insurance program, and that is how those dollars are calculated. So the adopted twenty-six thousand dollars, those dollars are not sitting somewhere in the bank or in a coffer. That was projected, and we approved, the commission approved that amount for last year. If you look at the next column, the actual, now this is actually what has been allocated and spent, out of the twenty-six thousand, at the point of this printing, it was just shy of nine thousand dollars. So the projections come in line with what you're actually spending versus actually what was budgeted. So in order to not have an inflated proposed budget, we want to make the budget as thin as possible, and, and as close to reality as possible. Based on what it come in the year-to-date, a good projection for next year would be twenty thousand versus twenty-six thousand. Again, knowing that twenty thousand is nowhere in the bank yet, it's just what we're going to be working off. And as the year begins, October one, we'll see how those numbers are, are spent. It's a legitimate recommendation, again, because we know, starting the year, that we're going to have one less person that's participating in that, in that plan. That's just one example. If you go down to traveling per diem, where you referenced the ten thousand dollar decrease or change, again, sixty thousand was theoretically planned for traveling in per diem. At the time of printing, we had only allocated and spent right just shy of nineteen thousand. So instead of saying, yeah, let's put sixty thousand back up, because that's a good number, it looks good. Planning and looking at trends suggests that that sixty thousand is not a good projection for next year. So the projection went down from sixty to fifty. Fifty is a more realistic number, based on what we saw this past year and what we're anticipating for future years. So that's the way, so we don't have any money sitting aside and saying we could move that money and do something else with it in another area or another line item. Those dollars are just proposed and in place until they're actually utilized and spent.
Okay. What falls up under other charges for the commission? I see we spent a thousand forty-eight dollars. What falls up under that? I'm just trying to figure out how, because I know we need someone full-time.
You need someone full-time?
Custodian. Under the commission budget that says other charges, ten thousand dollars?
Okay, hold on one second.
That's page fourteen thirty-six in the block.
Give me one second.
City Manager, can I?
Yes, yes, yes.
Stitch work, you have, and label framing for proclamation and things of that nature.
What is it, say that again?
The stitch works and label, label frame, award, those.
Award, you say?
Yeah.
What award?
When you do, when you do proclamation, you do incur some expenditure, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Those are the name tags, the name tags here. Some of the stuff that you see lined up right here, some of those will fall under other charges. So these name tags, these metal nameplates, that's from label, labeling and printing.
That's it, just stitch works and a name tag?
It varies, depending on what needs to go under there.
You have any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Not under that, not under this, not under this. I'm just still trying to see, still trying to understand, I, we need, I just think we need a full-time person. I hear you saying they're borrowing them from different departments, but.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, and where, why, what are you basing that on?
I'm basing it on the city being cleaned and sanitized. COVID is out again now, and we got a part-time person for the entire city. That, that's just my concern, that's, you know, everything is sanitized and maintained for staff and for everyone. I just think we need, I mean, a full-time person, you know, to come in here and, I mean, this, in here to me, would take a half a day to clean.
Well, we've been fortunate enough, again, and I haven't seen anything up to, in any of the city's facilities that we use and operate, in terms of overall cleanliness. Obviously, we, we have more with the AARP program was here. But it, it appears to me, and I'm throughout the city all the time, that we're not in any major or dire need to have any additional staff at this time. It would always be good if we could have a full staff of, for janitorial services, but I, I really believe that's not a major, major need of the city at the time. But it's completely up to the commission, if that's something that you want to address a little bit more in detail. But from where I, where I sit, I don't, I don't really consider it a major, major issue. Are there any other, any other questions? Mayor, you recommend that I continue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so if we can take a look at the general fund, starting on page nine, if there's any question, again, it spells out the general fund by revenue type, and it highlights what's being proposed and the percentage of the total for next fiscal year. And these come in the form of our sales tax, avalour, franchise fees, utility taxes, and gives projections on what's anticipated, based on the history of this year and previous years, and the total percent that we're anticipating.
Would the housing authority be added to this, Mr. Jackson, or no? Where would we find the housing authority?
Housing authority is located in payment in lieu of taxes.
Eleven in the box or eleven out the box?
Page eleven, out the box. If you go down to
You said full of revenue, okay, I see it.
If you go to three-three-eight-three-zero-zero, maybe about two, four, six, nine from the bottom, this Pahokee Housing Authority, payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay.
You see it? Does everyone see that?
Yeah.
That's where that's captured at. And also recall that you had a question about FPNL income. That's also on page eleven.
Eleven.
And if you find it by three-one-four-four-zero-zero, that's the first one. And then you find the second one under three-three-eight-three-zero-zero. No, I missed, I missed.
Three-three-eight, that's some page twelve.
Three-one-three-one-hundred.
Three-one-three-one-hundred, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that one. That's the sixty-nine thousand.
No, that's two hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, it's two hundred and eighty thousand.
Two hundred and eighty. What page that one on? I'm looking at page eleven.
Okay, let's start, the three-one-three-one-zero-zero, franchise fees, electric. That's two hundred and eighty thousand. That's proposed. And then if you come down to the three-one-four-four-zero-zero, and it's, and the account numbers are listed in, in, in order, you would see the electric utility service tax.
I don't see the two hundred and eighty though, Mr. Jackson.
It's up above.
It's up above in the three-one-three-one-zero-zero. It's entitled franchise fees, electric. You see it?
Oh, okay, yes.
And if you go all the way across, you see what's proposed for next year.
I got it, yes.
Okay, so those are the two that's associated with FPNL. I know you had a question about that earlier. And then while we're at it, I think you also had a question about the, the gas tax income. And that will be found under account three-one-two-one-zero-zero. That's the new local option gas tax.
Yes.
And you see that as sixty thousand for next year.
And while we're on these two sheets, that's page eleven and twelve, I have some, I got some question marks by it. We didn't get the donation from Dick's Sporting Goods this year?
From who?
Dick's, on page twelve, we had donations, Dick's. Dick's, on page twelve, we had donations, Dick's Sporting Goods, the three, four, seven, zero, four, one.
No.
And then football registration, we had twenty-seven thousand, and we only got two thousand? And we projected for thirty thousand next year?
When this printout, uh, was developed, we had not collected much in terms of football registration. You will have, uh, an updated football registration year-to-date amount in, in our third quarter budget update. So this number does not reflect all of the dollars that have come in over the last, last two months in the football registration program.
Okay, when the Orange Bowl sponsorship, you have five thousand five hundred dollars.
Uh-huh.
I personally know that it's more than that.
Well, again, when this was printed, that's how much we had calculated, how much we had.
This one came in after the first one. I'm, I was trying to figure out, why is it the last check is deposit, but not the first one that I gave them, that is not deposit?
Commissioner, if you look at, uh, the year-to-date, the year-to-date, that's as of April of this year. So that's what had come in as of April. Now, there's, there may have been, it sounds like you said you know for sure, uh, that there've been a second, a second one to come in.
No, that's what the second one.
Okay.
No, uh, you say, so this is just going back to April?
Yeah, this is the first one. The second, the second one is not calculated in what you see here.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking. So we start from, so we going from April to September? This is what we going through, because we not going back to January, November, none of that?
The fiscal year starts October, so from October to April is what you see here.
No, I, that's wrong, that's dead wrong. I know that's wrong. I mean, the five, uh, five thousand five hundred, that, that, you might've got that in April, or May, that's the last one that I gave them. The other one in January, you know, is, is, you know, it's not even included in this no kind of way. These numbers are totally off. Because I see there's no, no cheer registration, and I know personally that every kid have to pay to cheer.
Okay, as I indicated, as I indicated a few minutes ago, a lot of those dollars started coming in over the last couple of months. So it won't be reflected in what you see in here.
No, okay.
So what you was, what we will have for the third quarter of the year would have an updated version that gives a year-to-date to maybe the end of July. And those numbers, all of those numbers from October one to July would be reflected in, in the year-to-date. I'm, I'm not disputing.
Oh, no, I, I ain't worried about it.
Okay. Yeah, so in essence, this is not a, this is not a current, current, is as of April of this past year, of this year.
Okay, because that was gonna be one of my questions, now listen to the conversation. I know you just said you didn't want the budget to be inflated, and you were looking at what has come in now, what we have spent now. So I guess that was gonna be my question. If we only got ten thousand dollars, I mean, two thousand dollars, and we projected twenty-seven thousand, but then we have thirty thousand for next year. So I guess you're saying in the last two months, we've gotten more money.
But one thing is not on here.
I guess that's what I was trying, I guess that's what I was trying to understand. When I was asking, excuse me for just one minute, Commissioner Scott, with the commission budget, you were saying we spent this and you didn't want the budget to be inflated. So I guess that's what I was looking at, listening to what you're saying now, this is from October to April. And so this is from October to April, and looking at this, it says twenty-seven thousand dollars for football registration. But we've only gotten two thousand, that's what you was looking at when you were looking at the commission budget, that we had only spent up to this date, that amount of money. But then now here, looking at this, we've only collected two thousand, but we're budgeting next year for thirty thousand, which is three, three thousand dollars more than the previous year.
And what, what, what you will find, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner Scott, and other members of the commission is that revenues come in at different and various times of the year for different and various parts of the budget. The projections that we're looking at based on, and, and we're talking about right now, football registration. There's been football programs for many years here at the city of Pahokee, and there's a history. So we know at a certain time of the year, the registration fees are gonna increase, because that's the seasonal time for that to happen. So we can make pretty good projections based on what we see, not only this year, but in previous years. Based on the amount of registrations that we've had and the cost for each, we can make that predict, make those predictions and forecasts pretty accurately. Going back to the commission, you referenced back to the commission. Although those dollars are not calculated in what you have before you, it, the finance department is keeping track the whole entire time of what's being allocated and what's being spent. We know for certain, based on the amount of, uh, travel that commissioners do and the conferences that they attend. We know those dollars amounts, we know what's being spent per conference, per workshop. Uh, again, and we're able to make projections based on that information and knowledge. So when the projections that you see, it's, 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 it's a calculus to it, it's not just uh, numbers that we're blindly projecting, but it's based on historical information, it's based on current dollar amounts and, and costs associated with each. So we can't compare, uh, one part of the budget to the other part of the budget, because they're, they're different in their own unique ways.
I have a question. There's nothing on here stating gate fees, like how much revenues that, at the football game that they taking in? There's nothing on here saying that they took in a dollar, nothing.
Mr. Martin, do you mind explaining where those dollars are, are captured in the budget?
Well, uh, I, I, let me say this. Each department requests are made to each department to present their, their budget for the next, uh, three years. Now, some of the question you may have for the park and recreation, I think it's best that the head of that department come to answer those questions. Because they don't want to win the request, so they have, uh, they base it based on the projection. And the finance look at it for validation. But I think some of the questions really relates to, uh, the director of park and recreation.
I guess, Mr., he's asking though, where is the money that's being collected, say for tickets, uh, being sold? Where is that in the budget? Where, what line item could that be found in? They collect money for games. Where is the donation?
I think there was a request before that was made, that was provided, there was, there was some questions about parks. And that was provided to the commission, uh, um, before, there was some.
Mr. Jackson, can you answer that?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking to see exactly where.
So I think too, um, Mr. Martin, what we're trying to get at is, uh, when they turn in funds to you, where are you depositing those funds and where can we see it in this report?
To answer this correctly, there was some issue with park and recreation on the allocation of funds. I mean, I know it's not the time.
Can you explain that issue? Because I mean, we, we're in a fact-finding mode here, and we are trying to decide the budget.
I defer to Mr. Jackson.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
I, I would have to come, I would have to get that detail. I know it's captured, I'm not sure if it's all captured under concessions, which I'm thinking that they are captured under concessions, or any other line item. The, as it stands now, from my understanding, when, when dollars are collected for, uh, football games and concessions that those dollars are captured on a three, four, seven, zero, four, five. And, and the process that happens is after each game, the following Monday or Tuesday, depending on the date, the next day that City Hall is open, those dollars are, first and foremost, they're, they're put in a safe, the Parks and Recreation Department, and they're counted the morning of, prior to, uh, distribution and bringing them over to City Hall. And then they're counted again with finance department and deposited into the bank under, uh, flag football, this one for concession. So anything associated with concessions are, are captured here.
So concession wouldn't be food, that would be the tickets, the ticket sale at the gate? And so like the sale of, like the food trucks and all of that, uh, all of this falls up under, you're saying that's all part of concession?
No, I'm not saying that, um.
Because I think a concession is food.
Necessarily food, there's anything that's associated with purchasing and buying something. So no, this, that's not captured under that.
So thirty-seven, three, four, seven, zero, five is this, is what we collected last year from the games? Seven thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
At that point in the budget, at that point, April. So you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have any of the, the dollars in for this football season, because this report is, uh, does not include those much that we started a couple, a month and a half ago.
So where would the, uh, we were, where would it fall up under for the food trucks? So, Mr. Martin, what would the food trucks fall up under? When they're charging for the vendors, where would that fall up under?
Vice Mayor, I suggest you bring the director of Park and WAC. And.
But we're not gonna have another budget meeting?
I know, I know there was some structure, uh, on the Park and WAC restructuring the, the flow. So, uh, that's why I suggested, uh, we bring, as far as the budget, uh, the consultant met with Park and Recreation, they were developing the budget. I, I'm not sure if, if it was all addressed, uh, but I, I think that's something we can follow up. But as far as for the, the budget itself and the deadline, I, I, I think that's a different issue. We have, uh, I, I, as, as, as far as the, the, the structure of the account, uh, for the accounting for the park, that could be addressed. But as far as getting the budget done and presented, uh, I think we should move on.
So you're saying, okay, we're gonna move on, but we still need to understand, your funds are coming into the city, that we should know where the funds are, Mr. Martin. And I respect what you're saying, and I understand you're saying we need to move forward, but at the.
Commissioner, Commissioner Scott asked the question as to the gate fees.
Mm-hmm.
What I suggest, I think it's best that we address the structure, the account structure with Park and WAC. Because there is, there is a structural, uh, it can be restructured, that, 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 that's what I can say. The Park and WAC can be restructured in the accounting, uh, as the, to reflect, uh, the line items.
And I know we need to move on, but you alluded to, um, the fact that there were some issues. And, uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, were you, uh, gonna address those issues that he was speaking of? Or are we just gonna move on and table it for some time later?
No, I think the, the issues is the actual structure of the department and not so much the, the finance and funding of the department. He alluded to a minute ago, there was a, a, a change in the way that, uh, his budget was being developed in terms of line items. And he had an opportunity to meet directly with the consultant, and she made some recommendations. And the way that the department is structured, there is no challenges or issues with, with the financing piece of it. We just need to make sure that it's captured in a way that you can read it. And I was, I was looking for your, your question a minute ago about, um, how the, the dollars were coming in from, from the, uh, for vendors. And I'm not sure where it's captured here. I see a vendor application fee on page eleven. It's three, two, five, zero, zero, zero. And that will definitely need to be adjusted, because I, I know those dollars are not, it could be a coding issue, but I know for certain that those dollar amounts does not reflect what we receive from vendors.
And so are these numbers, I'm just asking a question, these numbers were submitted? Is these, are these numbers that's on, under the actual, let me just ask that question? So if these are, that mean this is the actual money that was turned in, correct? So I hear you say that's not correct. So where would they have gotten the number, or you're saying it's probably an error? But this is the actual money that was turned in and accounted for?
Yes, yes, that's not to say it couldn't be coded, coded accidentally, but yes, the actual is what was received as a point, at the point of the, uh, April twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
Right, because they have it budgeted for next year a hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Because even here for M L K Park, we have nothing for them, so I guess you're saying some of this probably is a coding issue, you're saying?
Where are you looking at for M L K Park?
Um, like for.
What page?
Um, twelve.
Three, six, two, nine, one, two, one, zero.
Right.
Yes.
Because I know, you know, because I, Commissioners Park, is Commissioners Park on here?
Yeah, that's, that's both M L K and Commission Park.
Right, and I know Commissioner Park was rented out between October and April, because I went to a repass there.
Yeah.
Several issues, I've gone to two events there, so.
That, that could be a, that could be a coding issue, which happens. We'll get it, we'll get it cleaner and cleaned up as before you actually have an opportunity to finalize it. We still have, as I opened up the meeting tonight, the workshop tonight, there's still some work that, that needs to take place uh, before we present this to you in its final form. One of the, one of the things is to make sure that we, um, we're accurate in our coding and also accurate with our numbers year-to-date. And I'm thinking probably within the next, probably before the end of September, you'll have your third quarter, uh, updated report as well that will reflect the dollar amounts up to probably July. Prior to going into your fourth quarter. There, can go to page thirteen if everybody's ready to move. This again is the general fund personnel operating and capital outlay. It's by department and division. And this includes both personnel costs and operating costs, and combines the two for the total. Okay, and we've, we've taken a look at the city commission on page fourteen.
I have a quick question for thirteen, Mr. Jackson. On H R, you have personnel at ninety-three thousand seven hundred seventy. On HR, you have personnel at ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine. But then on another sheet on their budget, it wasn't ninety-three thousand. It was a different amount.
And were you looking at personnel cost?
Yeah, for personnel costs. Oh, for HR, I'm sorry. On this sheet, you have for personnel, that is ninety-three thousand, seven seventy-nine. But then on page eighteen.
The breakdown of, of the ninety-three is, uh, if you look at the top portion of page eighteen, HR. Yeah, that's the ninety-three.
And so that's including a ten thousand dollar raise in HR? I guess that was my question, that's what caught my eye.
Really a raise.
Well, I'm sorry, the ten thousand.
The adopted budget in the, the, the year twenty-four, twenty-five was sixty thousand. When they hired, they hired the new HR, the, the starting side was seventy thousand. I mean, it shouldn't be.
So they hired her at sixty?
No, no, it was budgeted at sixty and she was, the person was hired at seventy thousand.
So how was that done? Didn't come back to the commission? So how, so are we paying her sixty, seventy thousand dollar now?
She's under a seventy thousand dollar salary.
So how did that happen without coming back to the commission to be approved if it was sixty thousand in the budget? And we're paying them seventy thousand?
Doesn't require commi- commission approval.
So we advertised for one thing and we approved this amount in the budget. So how was the adjustments made in the, so that mean amendments had to be made, right? In the budget? If it was budgeted for sixty thousand, so an amendment had to be made somewhere in order to pay the seventy thousand, am I correct?
Yes, and that should be reflected in your, your budget amendment. Yes, and that's, that's not foreign, that happens all the time. You, you you have positions at a certain amount, and if you can't get adequate applicants at the amount that you're advertising, there's some flexibility, uh, to, to adjust budgets upward, as long as it's not grossly upward, to accommodate for filling a position. So that's, that's what happened in this, in this situation. And it gives, as Mr. Martin indicated, it gives the personnel costs in terms of the salary and, uh, wages and other benefits captures outlined in ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, which is reflected in, uh, on page thirteen under Human Resources. So those, those amounts do actually match.
So let me just ask a question. So were we seeing that increase like that in all of the budgets? Like, I'm looking at them, so is that what's going on with all of them?
I don't, I don't understand your question when you say all of them.
Okay, so like when you look at, um, the, the finance and general accounting, executive salaries went from eighty-five to eighty-seven, five thousand, eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty.
What, what, where are you looking?
Page seventeen, since we're on this. And that's on page seventeen, block number thirty-nine.
Page seventeen, okay.
Like those salaries, they went from eighty-five thousand to eighty-seven, we're budgeting eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty. It was budgeted a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, and then it jumped to a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-six.
Yeah. Uh, Vice Mayor. The salary was eighty-five and the COLA was three percent. That's included in the seven thousand, five seventy-three. The COLA is, is seven three, that's, that's included in there.
All employees receive a cost of living increase of three percent.
Okay, so my next question is, they all receive, cause this says COLA and performance increase. So they all received COLA?
There were no
There is no merit, uh, calculation in the budget.
Oh, I was just reading what was on here, it says COLA and performance increase.
No, it's only the, the COLA, only the COLA, only the two percent.
You see just below it, three percent cost of living increase? That gives the amount for the cost of living increase.
Right, so are we gonna be able, can we scratch out then, performance increase to make sure that that's not going to be included? Since we only given a COLA. So can we scratch out the performance increase? Off the budget?
We can, Vice Mayor, but we already know that there's no, uh, performance increase, that's just, it's categorized.
We can remove it. I'm just asking if we can remove it so we can know that we, our budget can't, can't hold a performance increase if we can.
Okay.
Cause it says COLA and, so that means, I'm thinking that if anybody else look at this, we may know that. But when someone else look at it, it says that they're giving both.
Those are, um, two separate lines.
Yeah. Okay. Any other, uh, questions on the City Commission?
It's gonna scratch.
Department. City Manager's Budget is next. On page fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson. Oh, we, I guess we're gonna get to that one next. We're on City Managers, so I guess we're going one by one. I'll ask you that question then.
You know, for the sake of time.
Cause I was gonna ask you, for City Clerk, you have a three percent cost on hers, but the commission, don't we decide the, um, raise for the clerk? The commission does? But I see it has a three percent and yours does not. So and both of you guys are, um, both of you guys are charter members and we, the commission makes that decision.
I don't have a contract.
Yeah, those non-contract employees all receive a cost of living increase of three percent, which includes the City Clerk. For the sake of time, and we can obviously go page by page, but if there's no questions or consensus in changing and making any substantial changes, um, if you have any questions, I, I prefer to do it that way as opposed to going. And you may have a question on each page, but if you do, I prefer to do it that way for the sake of time.
Well, I do, we can move to the non-departmental. The non-departmental. I have some questions about that one. It says leasing vehicles, that's page twenty-nine and fifty-one. First of all, what falls up under non-departmental? And what vehicles are we leasing under non-departmental?
You wanna explain the general concept of non-departmental, Mr. Martin? And then I'll talk specifically about, just give an idea of what's captured under non-departmental.
That's page twenty-nine, square fifty-one.
I, I believe, uh, the Vice Mayor, uh, in previous, uh, commission meeting, you asked that question.
Not non-departmental, I did not.
Yeah, it's in enter service, th- those are items. Let's go to page, uh.
I asked about professional services.
Yeah, if you look at page, uh, uh, twenty-nine, those line items are charges that could be allocated, let's say twenty percent to, uh, commission, or fifty percent to City Clerk, or, or twenty percent. It, it is based on a percentage, it, it's not really some, it's, it's not, it doesn't pretend to one department. It's, it's shared, it's shared cost, basically.
And does not have a payroll component to it at all. The payroll is captured in the, the individual department, so you won't see any payroll amounts in non-departmental.
So you're saying that each department paying for leasing of vehicles? That can go out to any department? That's what I'm asking, uh, uh, three, forty-nine where it says lease vehicles. Cause when I look back in each department, each department is paying for copier. I mean, I'm looking at that, when you look at Parks and Rec, I see printing.
Because they, they have a, they have an actual printer in that department. But these are people that utilize printing services and copiers that doesn't necessarily have a copier in their office in their department. That's the, uh, copier that's used throughout, throughout the city.
So who's using vehicles in a department that it doesn't fall up under? For twenty thousand, that we budgeting for twenty thousand?
The, the, the amount that's budgeted there for vehicles was for a monthly lease, uh, for the City Manager's vehicle. I think we talked about that early on, and that kinda comes out to a, a monthly amount of sixteen hundred dollars plus, a minus a month for a lease. Uh, that was never approved by the commission, so there's no activity in that, uh, line item for this year. It's being proposed for next year, and the commission decides to do a lease for the manager's vehicle or any other vehicle on a lease program, and you have, uh, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars a month towards that lease uh, for any city-related vehicle. This particular one just was associated, budgeted for the manager's vehicle. But it was, again, never executed. So that's not, again, this can be used within any department, and that's why it's captured on a non-departmental.
So if this wants to be used, I hear what you're saying, it was specifically for manager. So I didn't, I was gonna say, I didn't remember approving it. So are we saying that we leaving this in the budget for this year to get a new vehicle? Are we, that's what we're saying now, we leaving this in the budget? And that's my question, I don't.
Uh, it's, it currently is being proposed for next year. As you very well know, that the city need vehicles, um, throughout most of its departments. This particular amount was agreed upon and put in the budget, uh, for a vehicle for, for the manager's office in the manager's position. It was not done, i- i- if it, just say for instance, if it was done for half of the year, then half of that amount would've went towards that vehicle. And if the commission decide to do another vehicle or a different vehicle from a different department, that also would come out of the same line item.
And it's only for twenty thousand dollars for the year? So, but this one is specifically just for the manager, though?
Not necessarily.
So you're saying it can be for any vehicles?
That's the will of the commission. And I think, I think it's good to keep it there, uh, because you may need it before the end of, end of, of next fiscal year. You, I would probably guess that you will use it.
And I see we have other charges. I, I guess I don't understand, I guess because the line items are not specific, what are the other charges for City Hall for twenty-five thousand dollars?
Where are you, where are you looking at?
Right up under the vehicle, lease vehicle.
These A ten, T and, uh,
Yeah, A D ten, and A D T, Security Services and Other Services that, again, that all departments in all areas of the city depend on need and use.
Okay, I don't know, I hate to be the only one with questions, if anybody else having a question, cause I'm looking at the internet. We're paying a lot for internet, because I'm also looking at, look at Parks and Recreation internet bill.
It's, it's expensive. I mean, we're, we shop these prices all the time. And one or two things happen. You can possibly find one that's a lot, well, not a lot cheaper, but somewhat cheaper, and the performance is horrible. Uh, so we, uh, have a tendency to go with what's working and what is, the best we can to kinda curb those costs. But we cannot operate without these services. And I agree, they are, they are high and getting higher, but that's, that's the economy in the world that we live in.
I only have one, one question concerning, uh, Parks and Rec.
What page you on commission?
I'm, I'm, no, it's not on here, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
That's another, how do you, how do you pay the, uh, officials?
How do you pay what?
How do y'all pay the officials?
We pay them, uh,
Cause I didn't see it, nowhere in here.
Go back to, uh,
Page twenty-seven. Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yeah. Give one second. They're paid under program supplies. And that's a general category, but that's, that's a part of what we were talking about earlier, the restructuring of their budget. Doesn't need to do that, but they, they've been paid under program supplies.
Where, where you see that at?
That is page twenty-six, five thirty-seven. It's four from the bottom.
You say page thirty-six?
Twenty-six.
What number you say that is?
Five, three, seven, program.
Program supplies.
Yes, sir.
And while we're on that, the food for the after-school program, four thousand dollars is all they use for the entire year? And they're giving the kids a snack every day?
No, that's, you're looking under one budget. As I indicated before, there's a city recreational budget, and there's also a county's, uh, budget. If you look under the county's budget, there's a allocation of seventeen thousand dollars, I believe, for food. So it's not only four thousand.
For food, it's four, it's five thousand.
Okay.
On page twenty-seven.
No.
What expenditure?
Page twenty-six, you have, uh, the four thousand is for the summer program, the summer only. And then you have
Where you see that at?
That's on page twenty-six, look at line, uh, five thirty-seven and five thirty-nine.
Five thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Is thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Program supplies.
Yeah, five thirty-nine is
Program supplies after school.
Yeah, uh, that's seventeen thousand dollars.
So food after school falls up under what?
The five thirty, which is the four thousand, is for, is the summer.
That's, yeah.
Oh, okay, it didn't say summer, so that's why, okay, that's why I thought it was that, it said after school.
Right.
It didn't say summer. All of it say after school, even expenses after school. Is that summer too, or that is after school, right up under it, miscellaneous expenses?
After-school program, the one thousand, uh, two. I can answer that right now, uh, the one thousand two. I know the seventeen is, the food supplies are included in, in the seventeen thousand dollars.
I have one last question, Mr. Jackson. I know you gave us a quote last year for over thirty thousand dollars for the Fourth of Ju- July event, and you still have the twenty thousand dollars in the budget. Are you planning on getting sponsors for that? I mean,
Yes, that's the goal, to get sponsors for it, but as you, as you very well know, that's based on, and those, uh, will end up being based on what's available, at what cost. Matter of fact, I got an email from one of the companies just this week indicating that, they're offering now thirty thousand for the Fourth of July, based on the fact that it'll be two hundred and, uh, fifty um, based on the fact that it'll be two hundred and, uh, fifty-year anniversary of Fourth of July. Uh, those prices can, in, in quite a few of the estimations, those prices could go as, as high as fifty thousand dollars for a program that the city has historically participated in, based on the amount of time and the amount of, uh, equipment and, and fireworks that you usually order. Uh, he's recommending now, if the city, uh, would be interested in, in a thirty thousand dollar package, what he offered last year. And, um, again, that's based on the commission. There's twenty thousand allocated with the idea of asking for sponsorships to cover any of, any and, anything above that twenty thousand dollar amount. But, uh, again, that'll be something for the, the, uh, the commission to decide upon. But I would recommend, would highly recommend that if, if the city is going to do fireworks, which I, which I really recommend based on the response that we got from this year, that you do it earlier as opposed to later, because the later you wait, the cost is gonna get higher and higher.
Okay. I do have another question. For budget revenue sheet, I didn't see the room from the marina on there. Were we renting out the room, the marina, the room on the marina? I didn't see that on that budget expenditure sheet. Maybe I missed, did I miss it?
Yeah, you missed it. Let me find it here, point it out to you. Thirty-eight, you go to page thirty-eight, and under, you would see object number three-six-two, three-five-zero, rental, Marina area. Yeah. You would see, it's under, uh, you have Marina campground revenue, reven- Marina revenues for laundry, Marina deposits, and the next one is rental Marina area.
Okay. And you did get the information about the lighting, Mr. Jackson, I wanna make sure, lighting throughout the city, uh, internet on the marina, cause remember, we talked about that, the internet on the marina, uh, security on the marina, the fencing for the marina, making sure we have all of that in the budget. If we can, please, if it can stand it.
Yes, ma'am. And any, any other questions, I do have some updated information, and I, and I know I keep talking about this, but I, I really, really believe that this is important. Uh, the total amount for the, um, the truck to remove the trash from the canals is four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, with the City of Belglade, um, already allocated in their budget, a hundred thousand for next year. City of South Bay has already allocated sixty thousand in their budget for the, for next year. And I am recommending, instruct, and strongly recommending sixty thousand for the City of Pahokee. That will give the three cities, uh, car share of two hundred and twenty thousand total, and the Water Control District, uh, has two hundred and twenty thousand. The other half of that, of the total, already committed in their budget. Um, the Water Control District, that being the East Beach Water Control District, will own, operate, maintain, and provide scheduling and ongoing canal maintenance for, uh, canal systems that's in and throughout the municipal and ancillary unincorporated areas. Again, um, I, I talked a little bit about it early this week, of, of the significance of that, and without being repetitive, it's gonna, it's gonna help the city alleviate, it's not gonna correct all of the flooding issues, but it'll be a main player, uh, in minimizing the amount of flooding we have in those flood-prone areas. Uh, and, and it'll go a long way to kind of combating some of those issues in those communities. Um, I know this time of the year, we've been fortunate enough not to have as much rain and not having a named storm impact the area or not, but you, you all know by living here and being here over the years that when it's bad, it gets really bad in certain parts of the city. So anything that we can do to, to help that, I, I think we should be doing it as a city. Uh, sixty thousand dollars is, is, it isn't, uh, change, chump change, but it goes a long way in helping a major problem. And the City of Pahokee on its own could not afford to do that. Uh, the other thing that it does, it, it fosters regional cooperation and support between the three cities. And I've already, always been a very strong, uh, proponent of working collectively as a region. And I really believe that this is an example on how a regional approach to a regional problem can, uh, get the attention of funders down the road to see how three cities can work as a region to address a regional concern. And we do have regional concerns in several different areas. So as opposed to City of Pahokee, City of South Bay, City of Belglade, making applications for a federal project with regional impact would be a lot stronger if we're able to show regional communication and participation as being requested with this project. And I think it, it, it suits the city as well to show that you have that ability to do that. The other part of it is that our, our audits are always talking about what we should do and how we should, uh, look to solve problems uh, in situations that we can and we have the ability to do so. This, again, demonstrates that. So I know there was a consensus to, to pull it off the table at last, early this week, but my, 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 uh, plea to you as a commission is to reconsider it and, and make it available and make this a successful undertaking.
I have a question. Have we reached out to our local farmers and about them assisting us with cleaning the canals out?
Uh, to answer your question, the local farmers are limited in what they can do in the canals. What this piece of equipment will give this area for the very first time is the ability to reach across the canals and throughout areas that mo- that equipment to date has not been able to do so. It has an extended arm that will allow it to reach. There's no, um, piece of equipment that's been used to clean canals in this area that's been, that's been able to do that up until this time.
Which canals are you talking about, and how wide are the canals you, you preferring to, because, I mean, I, I only know like one maybe that wide, but I'm just saying, the rest of them not that wide.
Well, Commissioner, I don't, I don't have the pictures with me now, but I think you've seen the pictures with the amount of debris and.
I understand that, I understand what you're saying, and where the, where, where the debris falls in, is it, at certain places in Pahokee. What I'm saying, but those canals are not that wide.
But they, they're not that wide, but the equipment that they have to date cannot reach the other side.
Okay.
It only reaches up to midway of the canals. It's been well, it's been well-studied and well-documented, is, is, that's the reason, rationale of the request to have the equipment to be able to do what it hadn't been able to do to date. And it'll, 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 it'll help a much-needed problem.
Oh, cause I'm thinking if, if it's that wide, they'll use a barge, you know, like, and then set the tractor on the barge and go side to side and clean it up. That's what I seen them do, but I don't know what you're talking about. I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, it should matter. I'll put it that way, it shouldn't matter, because it's, it's an issue that impacts residents.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, it matters because I know that they have other alternatives of cleaning it other than just reaching across there, they set a barge in there, is the canal that wide, they set a barge in there, and the tractor just swing side to side and clean it up. So I'm just trying to say, whatever this is that they're trying to get, or trying to ask us to help them get, you know, I don't really have a problem with it one way or the other one, because I'm just telling you that I know that what you're saying to me really don't make sense to me.
Okay, what, what make?
I understand, but you saying that it's a, it's a, it's a piece of equipment that could help and m- maybe faster. I don't know, I have never seen it, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, well, you, you make a valid point. Do I know the ins and outs of it and every maneuver that it can do? Absolutely not, but what I do know is the science and the study behind it and the request and that's needed to correct an issue or a problem. You, you kind of outlined a barge, the barge can't fit in, in most of the canals here because of the size of the barge. So a, a combination of maybe what you're describing may work, but this is something that the experts have taken a look at, not only this past year, but over the years, so much so that they made a request, several requests for funding for legislative appropriations. They're unsuccessful, but it does not take away the fact that it's needed and necessary. And when I really look at it, I believe that every opportunity where you can have impact, uh, and make improvements to the community, environmentally and otherwise, I think sixty thousand dollar investment is not asking too much to do that.
I have a question, Mr. Jackson, and I, and environmental, I think is one of the things our governor look at, and I, I guess my concern is the city doesn't own the canals, and I guess I'm just trying to figure out that, have they applied for a grant, because we, we, like you said, sixty thousand dollars is not a drop in the diamond, I, you know, and I like the fact that we're, that it's being advocated for this piece of equipment, but I would like to see that same advocating for our roads and everything else that we need. Like, I just see that sixty thousand dol- yes, that is needed, but I, I'm just wondering, how were they cleaning the canals before?
They're not, that's my point.
That's their responsibility to clean the canals, though, so they can't come, I mean, I understand what they're saying to say they don't have the money, so are you saying because they don't have the funding, they don't clean our canals out here in the glades? I guess that's my concern, that, that's what I have a concern about. They don't have the funding, you say they have not been cleaning them. So what have we?
I did not say that, I did not say that.
So my question is, have they?
Answer your question, let me answer your question in a, in a different way. They have an ongoing maintenance program for the canals in and around the City of Pahokee. That ongoing maintenance program have not allowed them, because of the limitations on the existing equipment, to do a better job at maintaining and cleaning the canals. They have a schedule, they clean the canals, but what this piece of equipment will do, it will help them much more correct a problem that they cannot correct to the degree that they can now because of the limitations on the equipment. They have applied for funding. I know for sure for two legislative sessions, and were unsuccessful. Anytime that we can make things better as a community and as leadership, I think that should be addressed and made available. If we're able to save or mitigate flooding in one area that we have major flooding in because of the, uh, buildup in the canal systems that we have, I think that's, that's sixty thousand dollars well spent. That's all I'm saying.
So I'm, I guess my next question would be too, so have we talked to the farmers about assisting in this? Because to be honest, Pahokee, we really don't, we really don't have sixty thousand dollars to pay for, uh, a machine. We need equipment in the city. We need, we, we need equipment. We need roads repaired. We, we, I mean, yes, we do need it, but have we reached out to the farmers to ask if they would assist and help with the purchasing of this machine? I mean, if our budget could, if we could withstand it, I support it one hundred percent, but we have a lot of needs. So we're get, we, we need equipment for our own city as well. So if, it's up to the commission.
And I was just about to say that, that's a, a decision that this, uh, commission would need to make. I just wanted to give you as much information that I could and allow you to make that informed decision.
Were they able to give you this schedule and all of the other information we asked for? I know you did give us and tell us how much each city was gonna pay, but were they able to provide anything else for you?
To this point, that's the only amount of detail I have. They've committed to work with staff, work with the city. Develop a schedule, it's gonna be, again, a cooperative effort, they're working, uh, with, between three cities, um, to develop that, and once the funding is, is in place and the machinery is in place, there's a commitment to develop a schedule to make sure, again, this is nothing that they're gonna be doing new, to make sure that that schedule is adhered to and proper, uh, protocol is put in place to make sure that the City of Pahokee is benefiting from the new piece of equipment.
So can we do this? I saw we have contingency funds in the budget.
Not that much.
So until, I saw a hundred thousand dollars.
And I wouldn't recommend spending over half of that. I would recommend sixty percent of that.
So my question is, okay, so if we don't want to approve that now, I mean, because we can't vote on it, if we, cause I still, I, I would still like to see more information. And so if we can at least have them to come to present, cause I just don't like blindly voting and say, we're gonna do this, and we don't have any information on the structure of how it's going to work, even if they could come and present to us from east, where is it, East Beach? If East Beach can come and provide us some type of, provide us something that we can see what they're talking about and what the services is going to be. If, you know, we have contingency funds and then we see it at that time, how it's going to benefit us, and then we can vote on it at that time, um, or amend the budget at that time. That's my recommendation.
That's, that's the will of the commission. I mean, you, I'm, I'm hearing you, but, and if the, if it's the desire to keep it off the table from the commission, I know it's not a, a voting meeting then, then that, that remains a consensus. My only appeal to, was to provide additional information and give you my recommendation. As it stands now, uh, I think, um, consensus was to remove it, or, um, and if that remains, then it remains that.
Can we allocate the money, um, I know we can make amendments to the budget with the stipulation as far as, um, them, as, uh, Vice Mayor said, just making a, um, presentation and give us, uh, for them to come out and give us a little more detailed information.
I'm not.
Amendment will be based on what we think after the presentation. Put it in the budget, then leave it up, uh, it'll kind of be in their hands, they come and do the presentation, and then we can make the appropriate amendments at the time. Just a question, I was just asking. I don't know if the finance man, he can respond to what I was trying to ask, or, or do you even understand what I'm?
You just questioned a minute ago, that, that what you just asking?
Yeah.
It, it all depends on timing. I know they have to order the equipment. Uh, as I indicated, they've already got approval from the other two cities, so, um, I'm not sure of, of the timing of it. Uh, what was suggested and recommended when we, when he initially had the conversation, when he came for the commission and subsequent, uh, conversations with the, the director of the, uh, Water Control District. I think they're scheduling, scheduling to make the order in November. So, uh, I'm not certain if, from a timing standpoint, if that will, yeah, that, it'll present before then. I can always ask, but I talked to him as, as, as earl- as late as today and told him that I would, um, we were having a meeting and I would bring it up again, and, and based on what, the direction, I'll get back with him and let him know what the conceptual, uh, understanding is.
And, cause I think our, our decision is this, just want a more detailed, a bit more detailed information before we make a final decision on it, if that's possible. Gave us all the information that you had, but.
What other information would you be looking for?
Well, uh, really more of a, a presentation. I mean, they don't have to have the equipment to come and tell us to, uh, uh, do a presentation and be open for different questions or different things like that. From the commission.
If my memory serves me right, the presentation was made, or the representative was here, and there was an opportunity to ask questions. If my memory serves me right, the presentation was made or the representative was here and there was an opportunity to ask questions. I'm not sure if the, you had the questions that you have now, then, but, but, um, but he was here at a commission meeting where he introduced the concept and idea.
Yes, I remember he made that, that appeal, and I think we, um, I think we had a consensus, so we both didn't know on it at that time.
I don't remember him coming with a presentation. He came and said for us to consider putting sixty thou- giving, at that time, he said a hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't even sixty at that time. And he said the machine cost a hundred thousand dollars. He didn't even have a presentation or anything. Cause I was like, we can't vote on that tonight and we don't have anything to look at. I, I don't, I mean, I can go back and find the video, but I don't recall him coming with the presentation to us. He came and stood up and talked to us, but he didn't provide us with anything in writing. And I don't even remember him saying, he was from east, what is it? East Beach. I know he said he used to work for them, and he worked for himself now. I remember him saying that.
No, you, you evidently, you, you, you have the presentation confused. He is the director of East Beach Water Control District. And I don't think he would introduce himself otherwise.
Are we wrapped up this board's budget, uh, workshop? Do I have any additional questions, uh, at this point, before we wrap it up?
I don't.
I entertain a motion that we adjourn this workshop.
Not necessary. You don't have to do a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Have a good holiday weekend.
All right.
I'll be adjourned. May I go back? Did you adjourn? Did you adjourn?
Yes, we adjourn this workshop.